Uh, if we could please follow the order of the regular city commission meeting for May fourth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. And then we please have full call.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Lieutenant Preston.
Here.
Mayor Gans.
Here. Um, before we have our moment of silence, unfortunately, this is becoming a little too routine. Uh, every meeting is keeping somebody in our thoughts and our prayers, but Doug Kennedy, who was a long time HOA president, Woodlands Deer Creek, a longtime Deerfield Beach resident, and really one of the most outstanding people you'd ever meet here in the city, passed away over the weekend. So I, I ask all of you to please keep keep having your thoughts and prayers as we have our normal silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If we could have approval of the city commission meetings for the regular city commission meetings of April sixth, twenty twenty one. Would you approve? For a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Give a motion and second, all of them. All right, aye, as opposed?
Aye.
City Board meeting minutes, uh, the American Heritage Board meeting minutes of December eighth, twenty twenty, December twenty second to twenty twenty, January twelfth, February eleventh, and March seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Our community redevelopment agency meeting minutes from March tenth, twenty twenty one. The community appearance board meeting minutes from March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. The Uco compliance meeting minutes from February ninth to March ninth, twenty twenty one.
Motion to approve?
Motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Drosky, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Approval of our agenda tonight for May fourth, twenty twenty one? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Drosky, second by Commissioner Hudak, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Madam President.
For members of the public, a motion to the White House, Attorney Mike S. A. Three minutes will be provided, however, one additional minute can be granted by Mayor Gans. Anyone connected online to the certain video must press over the mouse at the bottom of the computer screen and click the participant stat. Then on the right side, a button marked "Wave Hands" will appear. Once you click that button, you will be recognized by your profile name and your, your audio will be unneeded. Those participating will be on mobile device or phone line and simply dial star nine to raise your hand. You will be recognized by the last three digits of your number and then you will dial star six to be unneeded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first item on the agenda is honoring an old friend. In nineteen ninety eight, Jerry being that Z plan is for the first time to donate trees to the development of the arboretum here in the city of Deerfield Beach. And it was just the start for Jerry as a self taught landscaper. Jerry states he spent more than a third of his life as a volunteer for the arboretum and it's been the most rewarding and special time. Jerry also joined the International Palm Society, was able to travel to some very interesting places such as New California, Australia, Hawaii, and Portland. Brought his world experience back to the arboretum, which has been purposely designed to represent different regions of the globe. His role as the president of Deerfield Beach Arboretum allowed him to cultivate and grow the volunteer program. His contributions and his vision that was the collaboration, a collaborative project at the rainforest, which took over five years to complete. Visitors come from all over the world and the United States beyond to view the ever changing magnificent arboretum. Jerry's favorite part of being among the friends and sharing the arboretum with others. He feels nothing surpasses giving an arboretum tour and seeing someone light up with joy. His work has of volunteers touched many lives and helped create the arboretum as we know it today. And after twenty-three years, Jerry is stepping down from the president role, but will remain an active board member and volunteer. The city is looking forward to supporting his continued success and with the certificate recognizes the great work of Jerry being the friend of the Deerfield Beach Arboretum. Every corner of that arboretum has Jerry's name on it. He's touched it in some way. He's been a force of nature and we would, we are better because of him. We thank you, Jerry, for all your years of service. We present you with a very simple certificate of recognition, but know that we are completely indebted to you and we are so thankful for carrying on Zeke's vision and what you've done with the arboretum. Thank you so much, my friend.
My screen is frozen and voices.
Very good speaking, very loud.
Speech. Speech. Uh, I'm, I'm usually a man of few words. Is this, is this working? Um, I want to thank everybody for, for the recognition. Thanks for the, uh, over two decades of cooperation with the city. I couldn't have done anything in there without the cooperation of the city, uh, allowing us to do that. Um, basically, I planted the arboretum for myself and I guess the city got to kind of go along where it thought. It was a labor of love and it still is. Um, I just want to thank everybody for their help and cooperation and, uh, and I want everybody to go out there and enjoy the arboretum.
Thank you, Jerry. On April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, Earth Day, city manager goes to group pedestrians walking along Fallsborough Boulevard with trash bags swinging up swales inside of the road. Be required to find out what this group, uh, will find out what this group was doing and found out it was a group of employees from the world headquarters of the Learning Experience located at two ten Fallsborough Technology Drive. This group set out to conduct a community cleanup from their headquarters all the way to the beach to celebrate Earth Day and provide, provide this community with a great service. City wishes to thank them for their great example of community service with certificate recognizes the great work of Learning Experience. They did this with no fanfare. They just just did this for the love of the city and for the love of the planet Earth, and we want to thank them so much. Is there anyone here from Learning Experience here tonight?
I am here.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for this recognition. Our team had such a wonderful time on Earth Day, getting out in the community. They were especially moved by all the local residents who honked their horns, I think in support. I don't think that they were upset at us. Um, we even had so many people that pull over, roll their windows down and tell our team thank you. And it was just, it was a real special day for our group to get out into the community. Um, you know, our brand mission is to have a positive impact, not only on the children in our schools and their families, but the communities that we serve. And it was just such a great time for our employees to get out there. We're already planning our next community activity. So on behalf of the entire T L E family here at the world headquarters, thank you for this wonderful recognition.
Thank you so much, Doug. We're going to embarrass you a little bit and ask you to go ahead and give your name so you can brag about yourself.
I don't like to do that, but my name is Brad Wall. I'm the senior vice president, president of Brand for the Learning Experience and have the privilege and honor of being a part of the T L E family that the Wiseman family has built here in South Florida.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wall, and we really appreciate it. All of your work. And next we have a proclamation. This proclamation is recognizing May second, the eighth, this Public Service Recognition Week. Celebrated this first full week of May since nineteen eighty-five, Public Service Recognition Week is at times, uh, set aside to honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. The goal of Public Service Rec- Recognition Week is for public employees to educate citizens about their work opinion and why they have chosen public service careers. At the heart of Public Service Recognition Week is the opportunity to invigorate government workers by offering the thanks they richly deserve, but seldom received. Now therefore, I Bill Gans, Mayor of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim May second, three, two, twenty twenty one, as Public Service Recognition. For all of them, thank you. Our next proclamation, I don't have it in my hand, this is, we swiped it already. But I'm going to embarrass her anyways. The office of the municipal clerk is a time honored and vital part of the local government that exists throughout the world. The office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, provides professional links between the citizens, the local governing bodies, the agencies of government at other levels. Municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality in rendering equal service to all. The municipal clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community. Municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Now therefore, I Bill Gans, Mayor of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim May second through the eighth, twenty twenty one, as municipal clerks, we, we'd like to thank our entire clerk staff, including our city clerk, Samantha Goodard, for all the incredible hard work we do. Thank you. Okay, city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, number five, uh, item number five on the agenda is a resolution of the city commission at the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, considering a major site plan application from A and J Storage Inc. to expand the existing waste collection and recycling facility with a new twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot recycling and storage building, truck scales, and the thirty-six hundred and ten square foot office and storage accessory structure at the property located at eighteen ten Southwest Forty Second Way, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Application number zero two, I two twelve, provision two, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Uh, city managers or any staff, like, on this before me?
At this, at this time, mayor, there's, uh, no staff comments, but I do put the app in just here to, uh, to speak.
Yes, is the app in here? Yes, your district, name and address on record.
Sure. Thank you, uh, mayor. Fred Stacer, twenty-five oh one Southeast Ninth Street. I'm the, uh, general contractor and agent of the, uh, applicant. And, um, with me tonight is, um, Mr. Gus Carbonell, he's the architect, uh, I'm sure you see my, you know, projects in the city. And also, more importantly, it's, uh, uh, Mr. John Porter, um, the J of A and J. I guess that's easy enough to see. So, um, John is both a business owner in the city of, of Deerfield and also a resident of District One, so, um, he's one of your own. Uh, this is the, the third time that, uh,
Mr. Stacer, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is a, you do have a right to a formal quasi judicial hearing if you so choose, you know, a more formal process, uh, interviewing witnesses, cross examination, or you could choose to waive that right and do the more informal process. So I just want it on the record, um, if you choose to waive or not.
Um, I believe we'll waive.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so, um, this is the third time that, um, Mr. Porter has brought this team of three of us together, um, the second time in the city of, uh, Deerfield. Um, he's, uh, operated, he and his partner have operated for nearly two decades in this facility. Um, it's a family owned and operated, uh, project. If you go to their parcel tomorrow, you would, uh, probably see Mr. Porter or you'd see his partner, you might see both of us. Um, they, they actually are rearing hands on. They've been in this business for thirty-five years, um, twenty years in, in Deerfield, but thirty-five years in South Florida. Um, they're pioneers in, in green principles and recycling. Um, and with the completion of this project, uh, they will achieve, um, several other goals and improvements to this, uh, project, one of, one of which would be the, uh, all concrete paving throughout the entire project instead of asphalt paving, which as we know, concrete asphalt creates more heat, um, and also puts off the trolling into the ground, but it's much less expensive for most people to use it. Um, they decided to use the more expensive and cleaner, um, project process. Um, additionally, it will increase their capacity enormously, uh, which will help improve dealing with these hurricane surges that unfortunately we see have in South Florida where we have to deal with, uh, this type of debris. Also, um, it will, uh, greatly improve the suppression of airborne dust and debris, um, and improve system in that, uh, process. So it will be an improvement in that, uh, fashion as well. Um, also, it, there will be an automated, this will be an automated conveyor system and that, uh, typically in the recycling process that allows for, uh, a more improved process. It, it gives more separation, meaning that you, they send more, less material to the landfill and are able to recycle more of the material itself. Um, additionally, it cuts down on the turnover time of material and, uh, some controls more, uh, it gives them more control over the adverse effects of, you know, moving, um, recycling materials in and out of, of facilities such as this. Additionally, it will improve the screening of the recycling facility. Um, from the right away, you'll see a much improved landscape plan, um, and much improved, um, screening with eight foot balls and stuff around the process. So, and the building itself is more enclosed and does not, um, allow for people to look in quite as much as they do today. Um, so overall, it's a vastly improved aesthetics, uh, of the facility. They'll have a, um, a building up front as well that, um, doesn't even look like an industrial building. It's like high end office building as well. So in closing to my part, I, I'm not going to say any more about the, uh, technical parts of Mr. Carbonell, who explained maybe a little bit more about architecture and whatnot, but, um, um, overall, I would just say that this is a vast improvement, obviously for the business, but also for the city of Deerfield Beach, and we appreciate it and will stand by, uh, if you end up having other questions for people on the audience. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
What do you mean, uh, or should I, uh, maybe, uh, Gus Carbonell, I'll get there, fourteen fifty-seven. North East Fourth Avenue, quarter, and, uh, uh, this project, as, uh, friends explain, the site is, uh, increased, uh, size by the day. Uh, it also includes the traffic flows, particular streets that is the dead end street. And at the present time, the, uh, the slow traffic, uh, trucks have to come in and exit out to the, uh, to the street to, uh, uh, only one existing right way. Uh, this will improve, uh, flow. The, uh, the tall new industrial building should be towards the far, uh, away from the right way is, uh, mainly improved. Uh, there's an area where the, they, um, dock the, uh, the material only goes into this, uh, large conveyor belt that, that is, uh, be housed. The existing building, uh, store materials that after separation will be, uh, placed. And there's a loading dock where, uh, everything comes out from one particular location. Uh, up to now, they did not have scales, so two scales will be, um, added to the site. Uh, one scale would be for inbound traffic where there way the trucks, uh, under full and the other one would be, uh, some trucks leave, uh, a second scale, uh, to determine the exact amount of, uh, uh, waste material that they're disposing. Most of the clients that they have are long term and they already know the air weight of the trucks. And also the, the new facility has those special area for, uh, smaller paper trucks that they can, um, although they usually take a lot longer time, you know, not being in the business or working small amounts, and despite they don't disrupt the, uh, the flow of the, uh, of their recycling. Uh, an eight foot precast concrete wall would be around the right way and it does a private road, uh, uh, we are assuming it's like a sixty foot right way. There's a large sway between the sidewalk, it'll be the sidewalk and the street with the street crews. And we have a long office building, which is two stories, which should be, uh, along the front, which also screens some of the, uh, that's, uh, how many of the, uh, so, uh, questions are?
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Parnas?
Sir, may? How many new employees will be employed in this project? Uh, they will increase, uh, between ten and fifteen employees. How many do you have now?
Thirty.
Thirty, so you'd go to forty to forty-five. Thank you.
No one says stand.
That's a work of, uh, the only parking spaces that are showing that's for the employees in public. This comes on leave, so, uh, after they dispose of those.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hudak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the materials that this, um, site will be recycling, what are they? And do we have a, any kind of a, uh, a conceptual picture of what this building or these buildings will look like? All I have is, is, is the top view.
We had prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you. Uh, you know, they can show me, uh, the rest of the spine, so, uh, I can go over to, uh, show on the screen for you now. But this is an aerial view of the sheet showing the location of the, of the site. If you want to the next slide. This is a larger view. The, the area where there is a, uh, a red cross is the site location. Next one. This is the site plan. The big circle on the upper right hand side is a cul-de-sac, so, uh, we have, uh, the way the traffic's going to flow, uh, it will come all the way to the cul-de-sac and there's a double, uh, right way at that location. Inbound will come at that location and go in front of the office building and be waiting. Up there, they'll make a left turn and there's a large concrete area for maneuvering. Um, the trucks that they come back in, into the new building and dump inside the building. You see it on the lower left hand corner, you see a smaller, uh, lean food type structure. That would be where the smaller pickup trucks of, some of the water with a very small amount of, uh, old trash would be, uh, disposing of it after they unload. If they already know the air weight of the truck, adjust steam on the, uh, southern driveway. Otherwise, they have to go back to the, one of the scales. Uh, they do have staff, uh, standing there directing traffic, uh, to make sure that when we're moving, they know exactly where they're supposed to go. Um, the materials just recycle within the building and on the perimeter of the building, there'd be this four sides, uh, bin type where the material gets separated for this concrete steel, glass, plastic, uh, wood or, uh, material going to the right field. Next one. This shows the, the traffic flow, uh, of the trucks coming in, maneuvering. All of the, uh, paved areas are very, very large, allow for ease of, of maneuvering. First one. These are the ends of the office building. It's a, it's a scenario of this building and very long. The next slide should show the length of the building. It has, uh, offices, uh, of course, the lower floor will not be very visible in the, the wall that's built. Uh, it has plenty of windows, it would be a standing steam metal roof. Uh, the second floor is truncated, uh, exposed basery that has a core pre-mix for ease of maintenance. Next one. This is, this gives you a bird's eye view of the site. You can visualize the flowered trees that are exposed all over the right way. One of the, uh, entrances, this is the southern, uh, entrance to the site that, uh, is basically the exit from the site. The, uh, the blue and white building, the taller one is the one that's being proposed. And directly behind that is the existing facility that, uh, is, uh, not open to the street. These are just the elevations so they can see the, the proportions of, of the building being taller, uh, on the left hand side of the top of the, the short building is used. Next one. Showing the proportion of the office building on the lower part to the left, which is a long building on purpose to screen the, uh, the recycling. Next one. This is another bird's eye view and, uh, from that other direction.
Excuse me, if you could stop right there. Where would the forty employees be parking?
Uh, if we go back to the site plan along the southern, um, many of the employees who work in this, this is actually do not, do not drive or they, they carpool. I find. We have a little parking on all the southern part of the property and.
How many spaces do you have? That's, that's more sufficient. Yes. Thirty foot down.
Uh, this site will have ninety parking spaces. Uh, when you mentioned the number of employees, they have another yard, that's the total of employees that J and A has at another location.
So that's your question, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the commission before we go to the public? Are you pushing up? Commissioner Drosky?
Okay. You should, you should draw some. Thank you, mayor. Uh, this may be more appropriate for the contractor, but have you had an opportunity to review the staff's report? They have four, um, they have four areas of recommendations as conditions for approval. Have you had an opportunity to review those and do you agree to them? Some of, some of them have subparts, I can go through all of them, but you can just say that you agree to all four, that'll expedite this.
Um, yes, we have reviewed it, um, staff. By the way, we thank your staff, who were really helpful. Um, uh, yes, sir, we have, and we realize that those are conditions that, that, assuming that we're, yes, we understand that. We have, we have a deal with those conditions.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who care, comment on this item? Let's see if you can be on line or if you can, podium, and close to public. I, Commissioner, I'm kind of looking towards you as your district, I'm sure you're comfortable with this.
Yeah, I mean, this, uh, this pocket of, of my district has seen a lot of increased activity, uh, lately, we met some projects, uh, including waste management, uh, in that particular areas, it seems to be a hotbed of, of activity. There's, um, they're, they're meeting all of the conditions, which is suppression of the, uh, the dust, which is probably the biggest concern for the residents that would be across the, the lake chain and become airborne. So I think they met all the conditions, they don't have any, any problem. That looks like a nice facility, actually.
Excellent. Okay.
I guess that's a motion to approve subjective staff conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Drosky, signed by Commissioner Parnas. Uh, we have full call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Lieutenant Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
You're now at the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address. They may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute, um, by Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address. They may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. And for the public, this. And for the public, just a reminder, so this is the time for public comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you have public comment on an item that is on tonight's agenda, the time to do that is when public comment period is open. After that item is, the title of that item is read into the record. And no comment shall be made related to personal life or personal qualities. Any person in no language which would offend persons' ordinary sensibility shall be permitted.
We have our first speaker, she's former commissioner, former mayor. Sylvia Portier.
Give your name to the commissioners.
And while we all know you for sure, if you don't mind giving your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, we did it. My name is Sylvia Orpia. My address is two eighty-three. Southwest first terrace. Deerfield Beach floor. And so I need to identify.
Yes, ma'am, you're good.
Well, I have an island. On tonight that I saw in the last week. Nuke Pelican. And has referenced. What the city and the residents is gonna do with. Dixie Highway. Corner. And what we're gonna do as residents of that area. And I just couldn't be contented. Because I came over here tonight to ask you. To please allow me to volunteer. At do what we. Call community organization. That's way out of line. We did that back in the nineteen fifties. So anybody that's, you know, referring to community organization, she just think in terms of different individuals. But I didn't ask nobody to come with me or join me because. I was born in Deerfield Beach in nineteen thirty-five, and I've never been up. Deerfield Beach. And I want to volunteer. What you call it pro bono, which is free. Or I would like to offer my services to the city. Pro bono. Until we can get ourselves together. To organize and make sure. We're all together on one page. To get Dixie Highway, Carter. And the zoning and the rezoning and the density and all of the things that go along with that in our neighborhood. I know that there's a lot of people who. Hate to hear me say I was born here, but I was so fortunate because in nineteen seventy-four. I would say that to that, I reached the pinnacle of my life. When I became the mayor of the city of Deerfield. And let me tell you, that's a special spot. In my heart for this city. I can never forget how good.
If we can extend that an additional minute, please. I'm gonna give you another minute for you.
That's one minute.
No, you keep going. You're okay.
Okay. But anyhow, I just want to. To give back a little bit more because I thought. By now I would be gone. I never thought I'd be to be eighty-five years old. But when the stroke came, that looked like it gave me some new determination and new strength. A mayor. I could have come to you privately, but I didn't want it that way. I want the world to know. That I want to help us organize, come together. Get ourselves together and do the business of. West of. I don't wanna call it West Side. I wanna say of the Dixie Highway.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I would put what I'm asking for you in writing, but. I need a favorable book from the commissioners, you know. Just give me a little nod on whether I can go forward or what I need to do. And I would add it in a formal letter written.
Okay, your time is up, but we'll discuss this as soon as we're done.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, my time is up. Yeah, I didn't wanna over time.
No, you're fine.
But you told me I could go right on.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who care to speak tonight? I'm so sorry. I'm gonna ask you to pull down the microphone. We'll do closer to you. That's okay. Thank you.
My name is Andy May Dorsey. I reside at six one three Northwest Third Way in Deerfield Beach, Florida. Okay, I came tonight because we've been having a problem with sinkholes in our yard. And in the road in my neighborhood. And also, it's been ongoing trouble with the drainage system. And the sinkholes for about two years I've been hauling. I think I've been patient enough. And I want to know, you know, they'll come out and check it months go by, call back there, come out, check it. I wanna know when it's gonna be completed, when it's gonna be done.
Okay, we're gonna find out for you tonight. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who care to speak?
Good evening. My name is Naomi Yell, and I reside at six four three Northwest Third Way. And I've been there since nineteen seventy-nine, so long time. I pay my taxes there currently. So, you know, I've been paying to the system. And I wanna talk to you about the same thing that Ms. Dorsey spoke to you about, to speak about infrastructure in our neighborhood. Because I don't think nothing is really getting done about it. Whenever we make a complaint or something about infrastructure or for now, right now, it's the. Sinkholes that are appearing around the neighborhood, especially the ones that are appearing along the corridor between Hillsborough Boulevard. And the Hillsborough Canal. Behind our house where the old golf course used to be, where the industrial center is now. There is a, I guess there was a water drain, a direct water drain that goes in from our area or areas around. Because it's coming off Hillsborough down to the canal. And it has not been taken care of as far as I understand. Because I hear that that drainage has been there for maybe thirty, forty years. And it's a huge pipe that goes through there with our. Sinkholes that are appearing in the background home now. Because they moved all the trees. There were a lot of trees. There were a lot of Australian pine and other stuff that was along the area where our homes are holding up the sinkhole. So I think that once they moved those, I'm sure they had intruded and had been entrusted on the pipes that were going along that area. And no one has taken the time to fix it. Let me just say that in the last maybe thirty, forty days, they have sent someone out to accompany to look at it. And they started to, they sent people out in the past to put cameras through the areas to look through the pipes to try to find home. Nothing was done. That was before we got to start having sinkholes in our back, in our backyard. But we just need someone to look at the infrastructure in that area. We know we've been trying and that the houses are being sold fast. But we would still like for those of us who want to maintain our homes, who would still like for them to be saved. And we would like for the commitment of the city. And the people who are supposed to take care of those areas to be, to be a good commitment, not saying we're gonna do it for you. And two years later, it is still not done. And also maintaining around the frame hole. You can't, the water can't go in the drain holes because the drain holes aren't maintained with all the grass and stuff that's around them. To build up the dirt in the grass because the water can't go in. So those have to be cleaned on a regular basis, and that's simple. And we'd like, we appreciate your support and trying to help us with that part of our infrastructure area. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Rosen's like ninety-seven Florida, Deerfield Beach. Just like to bring to your attention that a month of May is National American Jewish Heritage Month, which is very little. Jews have been a active, fairly member of the country since nineteen fifteen sixty-four. And the first presidents came out. I get my space. My country's head, Brazil, when the Portuguese. Lost out to the Spanish and they forced these people here to convert or kill, believe. It's a twenty-sixth of the left who went up to New Orleans again. They settled, not build that community, but build a church for the English. And then the colony, even though they were told by governors in Stuyvesant. That they had to pay for no protection. We would have them with all, when anything had stood by to support themselves. And since that time, we've been involved in every one of this country. We've supported every event that has led to the survival of the country. And the history that they have and still things that went on. Jews also in their thirties helped start the annual ACP vehicle fund with the lawyers that they had, trained those some of those lawyers, worked on getting things done in the community. And we watched it grow, a relationship that worked until recently. And we want to get that structure back together. We work together. As you can see, when things fall apart, we're now in the middle of non-civil war in this country. We gotta get straightened out, get ourselves together on one level. For all, because I tried to do the pledge of allegiance at the worthy calling of the end of it. Because until we're all equal and treated equally and equitable in this country, we'll always be at odds with each other. It's a shame as good to this point. Also, this just happens to be the Jewish war veterans. And we've been fighting for freedom and has this sounding in the country. We were wrong. Revolutionary war stuff and in the Revolutionary War. Back then, Haim Solomon, who came to this country, followed with the, Richard, nothing. He has a history of transportation threat, trafficking, and really freighted from Poland. And so he was able to start a little business. And made money with that. And when the Congress found out about it, they went to him, this treasurer approached him to borrow money because of Revolutionary, you know. At that time, the country had no treasury. And they bought some street and borrowed money, get money, get everything up for deal. They'd have things like jobs today where they're covering them. There's a paycheck every week. And they supply their own funds and their own state situation. And these were the leaders of the country at the time. These are landowners and those that set the precedent for the future. In any event, amazing when you call out.
I'm gonna give you one more.
I appreciate it. I'll make it a very quick minute. Haim Solomon, who came to this country military, nothing like I said, built up a true business. Were the Revolutionary War to the point that even bankrupt supplying it, thirty hundred million dollars of his own money at that time. Which is billions today, that are all. There's also one, not for him, supplying the last twenty thousand dollars for his synagogues. Go down to the key to Virginia to take the Cornwallis ball down. And frankly, the French fleet set up in the islands, and so the British couldn't buy it. There is one war was one for revolution. So thanks to Haim Solomon and the Jews who fought the revolution, now it's got that thought in this country, the freedom of this country. We now have American English, not British English. And so again, we thank you for your support. We thank you for the time and hopefully by default, we will have the. It could be a fight right now.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Didn't need to leave Commissioner Hurdak out either.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public here who'd like to speak? Anyone online? Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm gonna close it to the public. Before we move on from that. I will, I would like city manager, reception staff reach out to these residents along Northwest Third Way. So if you find out exactly the issue is, make sure we can resolve or answer or play into some problems.
Mayor, I'd actually be happy to just address that right now if you don't mind.
Sure.
Yeah, we do have a cause made awareness today. We do have our contractor out there currently. So they're inspecting, they're cleaning the line. So once we get that cleaned out, we'll be able to identify any deficiencies and we'll address those at those time. But we are aware of that and they brought it to my attention, so I am, it's on, we've got that on our radar. We're working on it as we speak.
Thank you. Ms. Yella, I'll ask you a question. You might come up real quick. If you can answer a question for me. What was the question you wanted to ask?
I understood what you were saying about they have some of that, and we really appreciate that. But we've been doing this over and over for the last two years. And we don't want them just to come out there and clean the drain. We want them to fix the problem. So that we don't have a problem. That's what we want. They finish, they end it.
Ms. Yella, that's what we stated. They're gonna identify what the problem is and we're gonna fix the problem.
But the only reason I say that is because it's been going on for over two years constantly now that we've been asked.
Okay, this is the first I've heard, then?
That's why we came.
Yes. But absolutely, we will try to address that. I think it wants to be continued to be a problem.
You had a question?
That was my question. Thank you. And as far as an official capacity, I don't know if we have an official board put together for the area over in the Dixie Highway Corridor. And we recently had our meetings on. But I would, I would love to have. Ms. Portier work with myself as a community liaison to help me get an understanding of what the community wants over there. We've been together on this going back over twelve years ago when we first talked about having a workshop under the city manager name. And trying to get to the root of what the issues are and how we can improve that area. So I would love to be able to work with you. I don't know if we have an official capacity in that yet, but certainly I would like to work with you for sure on that.
I would be happy to work with you, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate that much, ma'am. I don't see anybody else from the public. I'm gonna close the rest of this public then. We move on to the next slide.
Mayor, we are now at the consent board appointments portion of tonight's agenda. It's items six through eleven.
Is there, are there any polls for items six through eleven for the appointments to these boards? Is there anyone from the public who care comment here? Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, or eleven? Not seeing anybody coming forward. We can do it all as groups. Is that all right? City attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna close it to the public. Commission? You need to read each one of them or?
No, Mayor, we're good.
Do the motion from Commissioner Parnas?
Second.
Second. We have a second from Commissioner Hurdak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
We are now at the consent agreements and expenditure portion of tonight's agenda, and this is for items twelve and thirteen.
We have any polls for items twelve or thirteen? City manager is a college. You got right on twelve and thirteen. City manager, is a comment you got, right, in twelve or thirteen? I think we have to handle those individually, is that correct?
You can do them as a whole, just need a roll call vote for the expenditure.
You have a poll? Okay, so let's do them individually then, since we have a whole question. Came up tonight, um.
Sure.
Okay, let's start with the first one, item twelve.
Item number twelve is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, extending the state of local emergency regarding COVID-nineteen until June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Authorizing the city manager to take appropriate actions, providing an effective date.
Commissioner Harnes, your question?
Yes, I have views, since the governor has removed the city from all restrictions relating to COVID. Is it necessary to remove, to retain the emergency status?
Take that one, that's okay with, Commissioner, um, Commissioner, um, Arness. The, uh, the answer to that question is, the, the governor actually himself, uh, I think last week extended the state of emergency for Florida. My understanding is the orders that were issued last night do not end that state of emergency. Uh, his extension is through June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, and it would be my recommendation that you, uh, also extend your local state of emergency, uh, for at least for theme reversion purposes and other, uh, emergency related purposes.
Should we amend this then until June twenty-first?
Um, you're, you're limited to thirty day increments, which is why it has the, the June seventeenth.
Understand.
Sure. Commissioner Hurdak?
No, no questions.
Do you have any public here comment on this item? Close it to the public. Mission?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Push like Commissioner Harnes, second like Commissioner Hurdak, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving a piggyback agreement with Government Services Group, Inc. For American Rescue Plan Act Assistant Services utilizing the state of Florida Department of Management Services State Term Contract Number eight zero one zero one five zero zero dash two zero dash one, an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand for phase one of the services. Providing for execution and an effective date.
Mission, any comments on this? Let's see, anyone from the public here comment on this side? I'll see you online, you're coming forward, we'll close it to the public. Mission?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Push like Commissioner Harnes, second like Commissioner Preston, roll call please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Hurdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Harnes, vice mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Danz?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the design for an arboretum, wall rail. Providing for conflicts and ineffective.
Hi, permission, um, I did, um.
I'm sorry to have to introduce you, so we all know you, the public.
I'm so sorry, my name's Adele, I am manager two, um, for Cars and Rex Department here in Deerfield Beach, thank you so much for being able to speak on behalf of this. Um, so I, I'm speaking on behalf of the friends of the Deerfield Beach Arboretum. And they are currently working with Gabriela Camp, um, Camp, I am so sorry. I'm Campborough, I'm putting in a mural on the west wall that is facing Hillsborough on the backside of the old. Um, they will be doing it like a paint by numbers with the after school kids, and you have kids filling it in. Once it is complete, um, we will be putting in thorny plants so that it can't be, um, repeated over. And the full cost will come from the friends of our, so there will be no costings. Um, here's a picture that shows the, we kind of imposed it on the wall, and then the map shows the location, so it's the backside meaning to the right.
Will Olivia Plafer, the city, the citizen city, read this?
Uh, definitely can make one of those.
Commissioner Ross.
How does this, it's been a while since we had the first iteration before us. How does this differ from the first? I, I know the first one, if I recall correctly, had like the word arboretum written in it. Uh, and I think the concern of the commission, if I recall correctly, was that from Hillsborough Boulevard, you'd never be able to read it or see that, and I think that's why we, we take that back. Other than removing the arboretum, are there any other substantive changes?
That was the only, that was the only change in just really the purpose of it as being art installation on the backside of the arboretum. Which the green lot is called the Florida Greenfield, which will continue to be developed as part of the arboretum and as a parking lot. So it would be technically in the, inside the arboretum.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who care comment on this side? Not seeing, uh, let's see.
Um, Jerry B. M., um, uh, seventy-three sixty, North fifty-first terrace, Golden Creek. Um, we first thought about doing this just as, uh, art in the public, but also thinking maybe the kids to participate in the arboretum, you know, the children will be in there to paint by numbers, so they, it's not gonna get real creative by the children, but they'll have their names someplace incorporated into it. And, uh, after they're done, if there's any problems with it, Gabriela will come and touch everything up. And over the top of everything, she will put a, uh, it's like an anti-massaged layer, like it's see-through, but you can, you can spray paint it. You can wash it off easily. And it's just, uh, art in the public and something for the, for the kids. So the kids can feel like they're participating in the arboretum. And when they come and look at it, you're like, oh, that's something that I did. That's, that's all purpose.
Excellent. Thank you. Jerry's used up his quota for the next five years.
We finished one project, we need to pick up another one.
That's right. Is there anyone else from the public who care to comment? We're gonna close it to the public then, mission?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner, Vice President, we have a second from Commissioner Harnes, we have, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And passes to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the amended building permit fee schedule across this exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
City manager, any staff want to comment on this?
Thank you, mayor, yes, I have, uh, I am building services director, Aaron Power. All right, good evening, Aaron Power, Land Building Services, Deerfield Beach, need this presentation. All presentation. There you go. Um, so just to talk briefly, this course comes up, so, um, the last time we did a, um, building fee change was in very early two thousand eighteen, here for very important reasons, we developed the building schedule was too complex. It consisted of over seven different pages, it was out of different, uh, disciplines, and formulas, and then all guide, or it's the same, so we've seen a lot of positives feedback on the building schedule, you go to the next page, um, since twenty eighteen. And the changes that we're proposing today aren't really reflective of what we did in twenty eighteen, there really is more additions that are necessary based on some new occurrences that are, um, happening. So really, the first thing we're doing is, um, in order to make things a little more transparent, uh, there is a zoning fee for a sign per review, thirty-five dollars. So every time a building permit comes in for a sign, a wall sign for a person property, so to use that, there's a charge of thirty-five, thirty-five dollars. It's not in the building fee schedule, it's in the planning schedule. So we've had some, you know, we've all talked and played about that, that it's not exactly clear and transparent, this is what the cost of the building permit is. We think it's more important, you know, the zoning fee, it'll still be part of a general fund account, that the, uh, actual charge and the, uh, the value we stated in the building, um, fee schedule, to make like real simple for the applicant. Um, the second thing we're doing is writing a scanning fee, so, um, as you referred, you know, we're trying to look for a software program called Easy, which will allow for uh, electronic plan review, and, uh, the applicant from anywhere in the world will be able to, you know, in, uh, upload their documents for building for review. Uh, applicants can still submit paper documents to the city, which we would then scan, so they can, you know, upload. So obviously, we want to offer that convenience for any resident or anyone else with an inability to do so. But we're gonna charge an annual fee for that, we're using the same fee schedule, that's part of the, um, the clerk's, uh, resolution. Get some sense of copy, download anything larger, so following that same requirement, we just wanna make sure that's in the fee schedules for the applicants that are aware of that. And then finally, the third thing we're doing, in, um, in coordination with standard management departments, other efforts, we're trying to do the city of Deerfield Beach. We're trying to be a more sustainable city. And we'd like to introduce a, a new program. That is, uh, it's fairly simple, it really doesn't do, um, a lot from a monetary basis, but what it basically does is incentivizes uh, single family homeowners who would like to do some type of improvement to their home related to wind mitigation, uh, hurricane preparedness. So we're talking about, uh, new roofs, impact windows, uh, shutters, coriant shutters, um, uh, new doors, things of that nature. And so if, uh, if a single family homeowner is submitting a permit or something like that, it's a different category. We will charge them the lowest available percentage, which is one and a half percent, or a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Uh, so it is a reduction for them, it's incentive for them, we don't want homeowners, you know, needing to make these changes and then seeing, uh, the city's building fee as maybe a deterrent for making these needed improvements in the city of Deerfield Beach. So those are the three, uh, changes we're proposing to the fee schedule, like I said, they're pretty minor, and, uh, any questions in here?
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner, any questions? I don't see any. Hope it's the public, you have the public here comment on the side? Not your opportunity to beat up Mr. Power.
Eighty-five thousand.
If you close this just now. Yeah. We'll close it to the public. Mission?
Motion to approve?
Second.
You have a motion from Commissioner Harnes, second Commissioner Hurdak, roll call please.
Yes.
Commissioner Hurdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Harnes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Danz?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is a warrant to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, repealing Article four procurement code and Article five procedures for sale or lease of city owned property of chapter thirty-eight, finance and taxation of the city code, and enacting a new Article four, acquisition of goods and services and disposal of city property. Providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and an effective date, this is first read.
Tonight, uh, mayor, we have our purchasing manager, Jared Ubelcusman, to provide a brief presentation. Overview of the code changes that we've made, I want to thank both her and, uh, and Mr. Soroka for their, their long efforts to, to get this, uh, before you tonight. They've been working on it for well over, uh, probably about a year and a half, so I want to thank them for that.
As the city manager stated, my name is Robert Cusman, I'm the purchasing manager of the city of Deerfield Beach. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, and city clerk, city manager and city attorney. The city manager, so my founder, I wanted to thank you personally, Mr. Soroka, for your support on this well over a year project, I really appreciate it. First slide, please. So I'm here this evening to present on a very important topic, as it is, uh, updating the procurement code. Tonight's agenda will take us through the purpose of why the code is being updated. As some of, some of the revisions of the code, and lastly, request a recommendation. Next slide, please. So why are we revising the code? So the procurement code is revised in effort to better define the requirements. Reorganize the structure of the code, abide by changes and stay law. And implement best practices by feedback received from our auditors. And lastly, enhance organization and readability in an effort to increase productivity or efficiency, excuse me. Next slide, please. So firstly, we started by expanding the definitions section of the code to include key terms. Also, with, uh, bearing in mind that the cost of goods and services on our rise, the inflation. The new code allows the departments to initiate acquisitions between ten thousand, less than twenty thousand, by administering a written code procurement process for purchasing the end of final part. We have clarified direct budget acquisitions, which must be part, uh, by line, uh, must be supported by line item in the adopted budget. And let me give you a, uh, an example of this. So the department is acquiring a piece of equipment and is outlining the budget, now they can use this option. As long as they're using a valid contract. We have qualified job order contracting, or JAG as it's called, as a direct budget acquisition. And I just wanted to offer you some insight of what a job order contracting is. So a job order contracting is a firm, fixed price, multi-year, multi-party, um, collaborative construction project, uh, construction, uh, excuse me, contract that has been, uh, formally, competibly advertised. Um, mainly, these contracts are used for small constructions, minor renovations and repairs, and this is to use for the job order contract. The new code now clarifies direct budget acquisition, which must be supported by line item in the budget. And this is something I read when over. Uh, the commission approval thresholds for acquisitions of over thirty thousand have been updated to be per initial contract term. Next slide, please. The threshold for multiple acquisitions from the same person slash entity such as a corporation or partnership for a total of thirty thousand dollars per year, or if this review was added. Commission approval is required if this threshold will be exceeded. The protest procedures and protest fees are revised. The new procedures, including a protest committee assigned to the manager to review the protest and make recommendations. Any appeals of the protest committee's recommendation will be directed to the commission for final decision. Revisions are added regarding the form of contract to be used for certain purchases. For example, a formal contract versus a purchase order, and I offer a brief example of this as well. If we're buying furniture, furniture is typically a one-time purchase, and it's more practical for that to use a purchase order rather than executing a formal contract. The bargain and suspension procedures for city contractors are added when the purchasing agent making a recommendation to the city manager. An abuse of the city manager's decision will be for commission for the final recommendation. Next slide, please. Additionally, a requirement was added that the city use best efforts to include small minority and women owned businesses offering, offering an equitable opportunity for these types of businesses to participate in the city's procurement code, in the city procurement. Furthermore, the requirement stipulates that the city is to obtain at least one vote to the extent practical from a small disadvantaged business enterprises for acquisitions of less than ten thousand. The threshold for requiring payment and performance bonds for construction projects is formally codified in the new code. A section was added regarding contracted verification of employment of its employees through the E-Verify in accordance with the statute stated on this slide. Finally, a section addressing the procurement service for beach management projects was added to be consistent with the city settlement agreement with the Tunnel Hills Borough Beach. Next slide, please. Tonight, I'm seeking your approval of the proposed procurement code update, and I'm here to address any questions.
Mission, any questions? Uh, I will say this, I'm very pleased to see that we're taking into mind some of the issues that we're part of, so the owners, the issues that we have, and try to modernize this, break the speed, so it sounds like we're able to streamline some of our internal workings. So thank you very much. Uh, and I imagine since you have Mr. Soroka. Uh and I imagine since you have Mr. Saroka involved in this, he's uh very helpful.
Yes, mayor.
I'm as well, mayor.
I would imagine, I would imagine. So you have the public here comment on the side.
Just a question.
Uh yeah, I'm sorry to support your comment right now. Doesn't sound to give us your name, that.
So we should put here one forty, what these good street area. Um, I saw the way it's written, uh agenda, uh but article five, um the appeal of article five, um although that I don't see it being replaced with anything or what was. Former practice, but we won't.
We'll get that question answered. Are you able to answer that question?
Uh, yes. So what we're doing is we're combining the two chat articles together. So we're not getting going away with anything. We just combine the two on the new title.
Okay. So, so. I want to say something to Mr. Saroka.
Yeah, the the I think uh Ms. Guzman has it right. Uh we didn't lose those provisions. It's just now, rather than being in two separate articles, it's now in one chapter, along with the rest of the purchasing provisions.
Okay, and so it comes, so city land, city on land becomes just another item like furniture or tractor or truck?
Uh no, ma'am. I mean, it is treated differently. There are procedures for the sale of city-owned land that are in in this new code, uh as there was procedures in the prior one.
It it.
It will be treated very differently. Yes, city city on land will be treated very differently. There's a whole set of procedures that go on that, and they're very different from mine furniture.
Okay, I I just want to.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see if you guys come up to the podium. Uh we have someone online, uh, Commissioner, Gwen Clark Reed.
Uh, yes, mayor, Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty Southwest Sixth Way. Uh in reference to city-owned property, uh will we be able to get a listing of all the city-owned property now when this uh is passed?
Uh, I don't believe that's part of what this is. Um, this is just our procurement code. Uh if you would like that list, you can do a public record request in tandem, but I don't think that's something we'll have as part of this our code. Is that correct?
If I'm understanding the uh the question correctly, that that would be subject to our property disposition ordinance that we passed not too long ago. Um but if Ms. Clark Reed is looking for a listing of city-owned property, uh surplus city-owned property, I believe we have that already. You can provide that to her.
Excellent. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you, mayor.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Or closing? Close this in public, permission.
Our special crew.
Second.
Question brought from Commissioner Partas, second by Commissioner Kudak. Uh we, uh I think we do, if you roll call this one. No, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're opposed, okay, pass it to the amnesty. Thank you very much.
Item number seventeen, in the ordinance of the city commission, the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving a seventh amendment to the lease agreement between the city of Deerfield Beach and the Florida Atlantic Research and Development Authority, authorizing the extension of time for the development of four acres of the Florida Atlantic Research and Development Authority project in the city of Deerfield Beach, ratifying the sixth amendment lease agreement, providing for execution, severability, conflicts, and an effective date. This is first read. And I believe we have Mr. Mealy here to present on behalf of the protester.
Good evening. Uh this is Dennis Mealy, uh two hundred East Broward Boulevard for Lauderdale. On behalf of the applicant, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So we have a few slides to show. Uh Ms. Goyard, if we could go to the next slide, please. So uh this slide shows you the boundaries of the FAU Research Park. Uh and then you see uh some of the properties within the research park, People's Trust, the fire station, and then some of the surrounding properties like the Mayo Howard Park, Deerfield Beach High School. And then the um site that we're talking about this evening is up at the top, uh right at Eleventh Way, bounded by Eleventh Way, Tenth Street, the I ninety-five ramp. Um, and that's called the additional property in the uh lease extension that's on the agenda this evening. We go to the next slide, please. So this is just zeroing in on the site. Um, see it there. I know you all know it. It's a very prominent location. We go to the next slide, please. So now this shows you uh the actual uh private property that can be developed. So that's the area outlined in red. Uh the area outside the red boundaries is a public right-of-way, whether it's the Eleventh Way right-of-way, the Tenth Street right-of-way, or the right-of-way for the I ninety-five ramp. So within that red line is the area available to be developed. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. Uh this is a conceptual site plan for what we're looking at. Uh this property has already been platted uh by the city and Broward County, and it's a recorded plat. Uh and you see the driveway locations we're showing are consistent with the driveway locations on the recorded plat. Uh in in gray, you see the parking structure. In white, uh you see the surface parking. And then in that kind of orange color is the building footprint itself. Um, you can see down at the bottom right, uh although our architect looked like his math was just a little bit off, a couple of square feet when you add it up. Uh but the ground floor is uh flex space. It's basically an open floor plan uh type setup so that uh as companies come in, we have the most flexibility to accommodate whoever may come. Uh and then off to the left, you see is the uh office tower uh that goes above uh that ground floor uh flex space area. If we can go to the next slide, please. Uh so this is just a black and white site plan where you can see a little bit better. Um, again, and you've got the building footprint there. Uh you see the um the um parking garage, and then you also see the ground floor spaces. Um, and uh you note that, you know, we we are planning to have more parking even than the code requires to make sure we have no shortage. If we can go to the next slide, please. So now we're actually showing you the building, and and let me just uh talk about this for a moment. So uh in this uh lease extension and assignment, what we are asking is uh the DRP Finance Group, the ones who have had the lease for many years, uh have a deadline to get a building permit to start a building, and they would have to be done later this month. Well, clearly, they're not going to comply with that deadline because they haven't applied for a building permit yet. So there's no way they would receive one before the end of the month. So what we we have done is we have asked to acquire their interest, their sublease interest in this property. Uh and we're coming to the city and asking for an extension of time, which I'll describe in a minute. Uh and this uh extension is only if the the uh new subtenant is the People's Trust entity that would uh take the lease to this property. It's called GS Deerfield LLC. I'm guessing that GS stands for George Schaefer, uh who is the head of People's Trust. Um, so uh People's Trust, that group, will actually be um taking the financial responsibility of building this building and carrying the mortgage on the building. Uh and the reason I mention that is because uh People's Trust and and RRT, their subsidiary, will be the ones that will be seeking out tenants for the rest of the building. We're going to be occupying about twenty-five percent of the building for the RRT use, and the other seventy-five percent of the building will be available for other businesses that qualify under the uh FAU Research Park statute uh as being collaborative with uh education. So this particular view is showing you the view of the building as if you were on the ramp coming off of I ninety-five and looking towards the east. And you see that um the main part of the building to the left, uh you see the offices above, that flex space is that ground floor there, and the building, the portion of the building off to the right, that is actually the parking garage. And you can see that the architects have taken taken a great deal of uh time to make sure that even the parking garage looks good. If we can go to the next slide, please. Um you will then see the view as if you were at the corner of uh I ninety-five ramp and Tenth Street, right at that corner, looking towards the building. And now you see again the parking garage off to the right, and the main part of the building in the foreground, and then that a one-story flex space area you see off to the left. If we can go to the next slide, please. So this is the, is if you were at the corner of Eleventh Way and Tenth Street, and looking again towards the building, you see the one-story flex space in the foreground now, and the uh office tower portion off to the right. If we can go to the next slide. Uh and then just keep going, one more. There we go. So um what we have done, we we understand that when the the sixth amendment uh to this lease was on the agenda, there was great concern uh with the city that the project had been going on for so long with nothing being done. So what we're showing you on this schedule is that we are, we've already started work, obviously at our own risk, um in doing plans for this building, but we will be immediately, uh this is an ordinance, as you know, first reading tonight. Hopefully, second reading would be two weeks from now. Right after that, we would immediately start with our plans, go into the planning department, file for our site plan, uh and a very aggressive schedule to get the building permit uh by March of next year. And that's what the extension calls for. Then it provides for a maximum of up to eighteen months to finish construction. Now, um I know there's been some frustration with the process. The city is obviously the owner of the property. The FAU Research Park Development Authority uh is your tenant. We would be the subtenant. We would take the place of the DRP group who has been the tenant on this property for many years. Um, and because we're financing the building, both the construction and the permanent financing, we'll be the ones that will be going out and finding those tenants and bringing them to FARTA. Keep in mind, uh if we could, uh Ms. Goyard, could we go back a couple of slides? I just want to put the uh drawing and building up one more time. Um, one more, just go back one more. Okay. So we'll be uh the ones that are primarily going to be out there looking for the tenants. And keep in mind that every tenant that comes in here will have to go through the same process we did, which is to uh have the white paper prepared uh by the FAU Research Park Authority, and then go through the process of being approved by that authority's board. By the way, this extension has already been approved by the authority's board, but obviously subject to approval by the city. If if this lease is not extended, then it will expire later this month. Um, if it expires later this month, then the property can be used in a couple of different ways. First of all, if the the current lease expires, the city could obviously use the property for a municipal purpose, for any type of building or park or whatever else it might be that you'd want to do. But if you wanted to put the property available for development again, uh it would have to go through a referendum uh because uh it would be a new use. It wouldn't be the FAU Research Park, which is what's been approved for this whole ten-acre area, including this four-acre site. Um, you, my guess is if you were going to do that, you would probably do some kind of an RFP to find out who was interested and what they wanted to build and what they would pay. And then you'd have to uh again have a referendum, probably, I don't know, the earliest maybe you could do that would be November of twenty twenty-two. Um, we think one of the advantages of what we're proposing, we know that it's been a long time that you've been waiting. But at least you know with People's Trust, you have someone that has already performed in the city of Deerfield Beach and is ready to do so again. Uh, we would build this, we would finance it, we would find the tenants, we would work with FARTA to fill this building. And um yeah, obviously, the the building would pay taxes, just like the current People's Trust location uh not only pays property taxes, but they also pay taxes on the intangible value of the lease. Uh we would be doing the same thing here. Um, we know that you want to get tenants in this building, uh that will be good tenants, that will be good uh businesses for the city of Deerfield Beach. This is a very prominent location. Uh we feel very good about it. Um, the RRT group of People's Trust not too long ago built a new building in Bradenton, where it was a similar scenario. They took a small percentage of the building for themselves, and they leased out the rest to other businesses in that Bradenton area. We feel very comfortable about being able to do the same thing here. There'll be uh certain improvements that we'll be making on Eleventh Way, uh along with the improvements to the property itself, to make sure that traffic flows well. And then one of the other things that we want to do, and that we are starting this uh process now, is uh we would have uh two sets of internships associated with what we're doing. One at this building that would be focused on the construction trades, and one at the People's Trust headquarters building that would be focused on the legal department of People's Trust. Where we can get young people in the community that are interested in either construction trades or a a law, uh future in in practicing law, being a paralegal, whatever it may be, uh that we can get young people from the community involved in that, as we have in in other areas of our work uh at People's Trust itself. Um, the, in addition to the seventh extension to the lease, there is also what's called the side letter that provides for us to pay a lease extension fee of two hundred thousand dollars, uh paid to the city uh and to the general fund for the city to use as the city sees fit. Uh, one hundred thousand dollars of that amount would be paid uh five days after execution of the seventh amendment, which we hope will happen uh two weeks from tonight. And then the other hundred thousand dollars would be paid upon the issuance of the building permit to build this building. We we believe there will be probably over two hundred jobs in this building um based on all of the different square footages and the different businesses that would come in. Uh as I mentioned, uh the RRT group will be taking about twenty percent of the building. Um, by the way, we've been asked a few questions, so let me just clear them up now. I know this isn't the time to talk about a site plan, uh but we will not have outdoor storage of materials or anything like that. The idea is to make this look very nice. It's got roads on three sides. It's very visible, uh and we want to make sure it looks really good. So uh we know that it's been a long time coming for something to happen on this property. Uh we're hopeful that uh you will support this effort uh for People's Trust to continue uh their corporate responsibilities in the city of Deerfield Beach and the relationships they've built here, and we'd like to keep those going. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Um, Commissioner, I see Vice Mayor, you had your hand up.
I did. Um, this is a very good opportunity for us. Um, I was particularly drawn to the in internship opportunities, which is definitely needed for them to work with young people in the community, to be able to present this. And the FARTA money of uh two hundred thousand uh also can be utilized in a very positive manner. Um, if you remember, when this came up before, my concern was right across the street from this proposed building is a park. It's called Mayo Howard Park. That park was named for the first black police officer that came to the city of Deerfield Beach. The only problem, if you go over, you'll see that it's not so well-maintained. And I think that the FARTA money could be used uh to really improve the area, which would improve the aesthetics for the building as well. Uh, right now, uh Mayo Hard Park basically has very little parking. People are parking in the streets, proposing all kinds of uh, you know, hazards and and uh, you know, just the parking is is inadequate. I think the first hundred thousand that is presented should be utilized to increase uh the parking over at Mayo Howard, and the additional money uh would be used for park improvements.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, any else from Commissioner Kirk? Vice Mayor or Commissioner Partas?
It's my understanding that if we don't approve this tonight, nothing will be done with that property for about five years, given the fact that seems like, from what I saw from People's Trust, a decent building, perhaps two hundred new jobs. I'm trying to find the negative and I don't see one. Going through referendums, always the risk that it's turned down and that way this doesn't mean the city. This is a project that's workable, it needs jobs. It's a nice-looking building that people will see coming off the highway or going by. And I think it might be good for the city, finally do something with that property or do something positive. It's my understanding too that, and that's what we made for FAU's intern students, to find work there as interns. And that's always a plus. So I will support this.
Commissioner Hudeback?
I, I think it's a wonderful project as well. I was just curious how you're going to find these interns? How are you going to find these, you know, what schools are you going to be partnering with in order to, to promote these internship programs? You know, last commission meeting, we had an internship program proposed for mechanics, which I think is a tremendous idea as well. But if it's not promoted and nobody knows about it, then it's just words on a piece of paper. So how are we going to be promoting this to our community to make sure that individuals that want to take advantage of this have that ability? You know, other than listening to the, the, the May fourth commission meeting from two thousand twenty-one?
Vice Mayor, can I respond?
Yes, sir.
So what our plan would be is first of all, working with your economic development group at the city to determine what's the best way to reach out. But I think one of the easy ways to do it is going to be through Deerfield Beach High School. Now, that may be, you know, only one source, but what we're trying to do is reach people that live in Deerfield Beach, young people that live in Deerfield Beach. So I would think that our starting point would be Deerfield Beach High School, our neighbor.
Is that answered your question, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
A little bit to the public concerning what the Republican Party comments outside.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, City Stat. My name is Dave Reyes and I have the executive director of Deerfield Beach Economic Development. And we're here at Ten Fairway Drive, Deerfield Beach, three-three-four-four-one. Board of Directors have given me directions, speaking support of the matter in front of me. I'd like to present four good reasons to you forward. First, to build the bottom of your well-deserved growing reputation for leadership as policymakers and support the growth of high-skill, high-wage jobs for residents in Deerfield Beach. Second, that you will open a fresh new relationship with Florida Atlantic University. Third, to demonstrate your willingness to work with our current corporate citizens to continue to produce high-skill, high-wage job opportunities for members of our community. And fourth, to take opportunity to do something now, to not kick the proverbial can down the road. With regard to your well-deserved reputation as leaders in economic development, whose job growth, I'd like to congratulate you on the recent Urban Land Institute study developing Tixtico. We have to talk about your, the city's interaction with Florida Atlantic University's planning master's students program for the four-quarter study. I think more importantly, if you look at the incentive plan that the city's Department of Economic Development developed to entice businesses to hire residents here is, is a real sense of your leadership. And last but not least is the recent resolution that this organization has to support, to support bill that was drafted by State Representative Lamarcus for tax incentive statewide. These all speak to your reputation that this is a business, business-friendly community. Second, regarding the relationship with FAU, for twenty years of frustration with the public authority, FARTA, has overshadowed the economic potential of a strong relationship with the university. This commission has had bare enough experience in working with other public authorities like the NPO, the FPT. By approving this transfer of the lease to the applicant, you'll be opening the door to the high-skill, high wages in some of the internships that Commissioner Drop, Commissioner Hudeback talked about. And it's important to note that People's Trust already has a strong relationship with the FAU. Your demonstrations and your willingness to work with the current corporate citizens to continue to produce high-skill wage opportunities for our community will be championed across out of this South Florida, but across the country. And the energy and the time and the real dollars that PTIC has put into this has become a passion for the leadership group, a passion that demonstrates their commitment to the city. And your support of this project will tell the world that you are here to work with your existing business community here to help grow the city. Last but not least, take the opportunity to do something now. If we work with the private sector to help us make this an above-average success for an above-average community, not at the expense of the residents, but for their benefit by building a tax base around the city's commitment with a focus on education. I won't need it all, but thank you. To the city's commitment with a focus on education is what we call the currency of economic development. EDC pledges to leverage their connections and resource that the business community has accumulated through participation and support with the EDC. We are committed to helping the applicant find the best dance floor, the proposed flex space. We wholeheartedly support the item in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Clark Reed, I see your hand raised.
Yes, Mayor, Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen-thirty Southwest Sixway, Deerfield Beach. I'm really happy tonight to kind of see something being projected for that corridor and that piece of property. I just wanted to ask Mr. Millie about the traffic along Tenth Street, the traffic coming off of I ninety-five and the traffic going on to Eleventh Way. That's a very, very dangerous intersection there. And I'm wanting to know, how are you proposing to deal with, with that?
Mayor, could I respond?
Yes, you sure can. Before you do, is there any other questions you have regarding this? When did you have any other questions before he answers this one?
So when I have the site plan up there, you may have noticed that we have two driveways and they're both on Eleventh Way. So we have no direct access, obviously, from the I ninety-five ramp, nor do we have any direct access from Tenth Street. So to come to this property, if you exit I ninety-five, you'd go east on Tenth and then you'd turn right on Eleventh Way. And the driveway doesn't come up right away. You're on Eleventh Way for a while before you're turning into the, to the driveway. Also, we will be adding turn lanes at our driveways so that people that are coming in can get out of the regular traffic lane and into the turn lane. We'll also be putting in a sidewalk along Eleventh Way as part of the development as well. Finally, when the property was originally reviewed for traffic and approved, it was limited to approximately a hundred thousand square feet and we're building about eighty-six thousand square feet. So it's a little bit less than what it was originally planned for and what the traffic was originally reviewed for.
Is there anyone else in the public in your column? And then close it to the public then? I'll throw my two cents in on this. I know Commissioner Parkes and City Stat have a hard time seeing some of the issues with this. I can tell you, I can debate both sides and sorry, get very I disagree wholeheartedly that the history of this project, I am not going to fault the people that brought this forward originally. I think the city commission at the time and the city manager were trying to be creative, they thought they had a good partnership with FAU and it was an opportunity that was unique and it was an opportunity that they had high hopes for. It just didn't work. I think the big frustration and the failure has been that all of these years have just been completely stagnant. It's one thing to swing and miss, but it's another thing to not have a resolution to the problem. I disagree that the partnership with FAU has been a good match for. I have doubts that it will continue in the future to be a good match because quite frankly, they haven't done anything about this project or this property until really the deadlines started ticking. Once that happens, suddenly everybody's interested, they have full commitment. I've been in office for over twelve years now. That's the only time I ever hear from them is when this happens. Mr. Duffles worked very hard and tried to do some, to touch base and try to keep us informed. Basically, a, a project that's moved nowhere. I have been a hard no for an extension on this project. But as I said, I can argue both sides of this. In the end, we want to make sure that we're doing the best, we're serving the public with a unique piece of property that is in a great location. And I feel that you need to make sure that we're working on something that's going to give the public their best bang for the buck. Unlike others, I don't fear going out to a referendum. There is a the luxury of having the freedom to open it up beyond restrictions that we've had all this time is very tempting to be able to do that. And I think going to referendum, I am confident that we would be able to go out, find some opportunities that we don't have in front of us now or we had in front of us in the past because some of the restrictions. And I think we could build a consensus to move with this. I've heard some horrible ideas from this location. And I've heard some other, let's say, less than creative options for this site. I feel, especially with moving forward with an investment into the city to help improve the area, working with a known entity who has shown the ability to do a good job of projects they've brought forward, having the, the architecture team that they have on, on this project is very impressive. Let's see if Mr. Callow's is online right now and work speaks for itself. I, I, I'm not impressed with the iPod name, quite frankly. It's a good thing they didn't call it Innovation Park at Deerfield because then we have an iPad instead of an iPod. So I, I think we should get a more creative when it comes to the name of this. And, and having that opportunity with the internships are great. And there might be others that would say, well, why can't we do more than two positions? The reality is, we don't, we want to make sure it succeeds. And I, I think, I think this is, this is a very good thing and a step in the right direction. I hope that while we should start with Deerfield Beach High School, keep in mind that there are other high schools that Deerfield Beach students go to, especially in the west. They are not zoned for Deerfield Beach High School. And they are zoned for high schools that are outside of our city limits, but they are still Deerfield Beach residents. If we keep it as Deerfield Beach residents, I think they could just, could step in the right direction. I am not, I'm not so sure committing the entire two hundred thousand dollars to Mayo Howard Park is the right idea because it's a very small park. But absolutely, I feel that investment, that it should go in this corridor and it should go towards that park. And while maybe not the full two hundred thousand going there, certainly to do improvements to that area that are much needed. I will ask one thing about this as we move forward, if we move forward with this great-looking project, that we do a better job leasing what is happening on Tenth Street and ninety-five. Half of it took for ten straight years going through. See flower sale vendors, see snipe signs, see panhandling. I don't travel that route very often. Every time I do, it's the same issues that have been there forever. This isn't a mystery. Where it's at, it's the same problem. Every debt you should know is in that zone. We stopped there and we heard that issue. It's not legal, it's an eyesore and it's a hazard. And it does not add to drivability of that road or the safety of that road by having these type of distractions. So I hope that if we move forward with this project, that we will do a better job of making sure we clean up that corridor along there. I feel that, as tempting as it is to have the freedom to be able to go out and, and take away some of these restrictions we've had, there is a price. And I think the citizens, especially with this investment from the community coming forward, I, I think the citizens are getting a good deal for this. You have a known entity who is committed to the city of Deerfield Beach, who is committed to this project. And once the project is built, it's a different scenario than it is with empty land and motivation to make sure those spaces are built. I am very confident that they can do that and they will aggressively and they will do it in the best interest of the city of Deerfield Beach. So for me, I, I, I do support this, what is being presented, and I look forward to this. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. I have struggled mightily with this particular item on the agenda for tonight as Mr. Millie can attest to the team conversations that we've had coming up to the meeting tonight, including several today. And this comes down to me is, what is the city's vision for this particular piece of property? Commissioner Parkes asked, what do we give up? Well, we, we give up an asset. One of the things that I talked about in my reelection, reelection speech to the commission of some of the big goals that I would like to pursue during my term, one of which was pursuing P three options that we have here in the city of Deerfield Beach to match. Well, how does P three relate to this particular parcel? Well, when you think of the P three opportunities, you think of probably Marty Felsky Park first and then you probably think second, or one A, one B, of this, you know, city hall here, parking lot, the police station next door, Pioneer Park, kind of that triumvirate there is an opportunity. But you don't know what developers want as part of a, a P three. Maybe this parcel of land that we have is an asset that we're giving away that could be a chip in a P three that we are going for. Maybe that's something that we hobbled together with one of these projects and we're giving, we're giving that up. And so that is the vision that we need to, as policymakers, decide tonight, are we willing to give up that asset going forward? And I have to weigh that against what the project being presented to us here is tonight. There's nothing against People's Trust in any comments that I'm going to make tonight. They've been a great corporate citizen here in the city of Deerfield Beach and they participated and helped our firefighters and provided lunches and do all kinds of things for them. So I know their commitment and their heart is in the right, in the right place. I think the strongest argument for the project is they're ready, willing and able to go now. If the city wanted to hold on to this particular property, for whatever reason, you can find something better. This isn't what, what we wanted. We wanted a university there, we wanted a, a hospital there, whatever it may be. We wanted something else and we're going to hold out for it. That takes, that takes time and that takes risk. It takes a vision too. Are we willing to hold out for that? Are we willing to go with what's on the table with us tonight? But the strongest argument is, is this applicant is ready to go, they're ready to go tonight. The city, if we wanted to do something, we most likely would have to go, go to referendum, which I, as well, I'm not afraid to do. And then you'd have to go through the procurement process. And we're talking years down the road. This is not something that, when I'm going to kid ourselves, this is not something that's going to happen overnight. It's years down the road if the city were to go it alone. Or we have somebody here tonight. I think the second strongest argument for the project is that Mr. Millie indicated there's going to be a mortgage or a construction loan for this property. And how are you going to pay that loan? You have to pay it through revenue somehow and that revenue has to come through rent. And the rent is getting tenants in that building. So People's Trust has a self-interest in putting tenants into that building as soon as possible if they want to pay their mortgage. My concern all along has been, what tenants, what quality tenants are going to go into that building? There has not been any dedication to the city of Deerfield Beach that I have seen since I've been on the There has not been any dedication to the city of Deerfield Beach that I have seen since I've been on the commission. And, and I'm looking and I've asked and I've poked my nose around for that commitment going forward is what commitment are we getting from the community? From FAU, from the EDC, from Broward Health, from the Fort Lauderdale Alliance? What commitment are we getting to go forward? And they've all talked to me, uh, nobody wants to put anything in writing. Uh, but they've all talked to me about their interests, uh, about this particular project going, going forward. Um, and so that to me is, is optimistic. Uh, the, the EDC, this is probably their, their word on the sword. They, Mr. Moran stood at the podium and said that they are going to put their resources behind this and get tenants in there. We have our own economic department in the city that we have that can help with this. We have the Fort Lauderdale Alliance, which is also, so that they were willing to be involved. And Shane Strum, now he could not make it tonight and, and his designee could not make it tonight. But indicated that, you know, CEO for Broward Health, that they are interested. There's no commitment, there's no guarantee. Um, and, and what interest and how long it takes that interest to materialize remains to be seen. Uh, but that's an interest that we haven't had in many, many years, if at all, for this particular project. So my concern all along is not filling this with, there's nothing against accountants or lawyers or whatever, or executive suites. But if you fill it up with that, that doesn't meet the municipal public purpose that I thought always was intended for this particular property. And, and I don't want to shy away from that. And I know the applicant and the tenants will have to go through the white paper process. And I've read the white paper. If you've read the white paper. And it's a little, it's a little liberal. You can, you can fit a lot under that, that white paper and still call it a municipal. Municipal purpose and maybe it's, you know, vague intentionally so, but at least there's a process that they would have to go through. So weighing it tonight, again, is the vision, the potential vision for the future versus what we have before us tonight now. And that's not easy for me to, to reconcile because I can see the city going it alone and doing great things there. Um, but it takes time and it takes patience. But, and, and I may change my, and whatever I vote tonight, I may change in two weeks for the next meeting. So whether I vote yea or nay tonight, I could very well be on the opposite side two, two weeks from now. Because this is an 80-year commitment that we're making tonight. Um, and, and, and I disagree that we should dump the whole $200,000 into the, the park next door. I, I, Mr. Mealy, I think your client, I heard this for the first time tonight, so I'm sorry for putting you on. Sorry for putting you on the spot, but I, I, I think your client needs to chip in because they're going to benefit directly from this park. Uh, as, as well because they're going to go over there and eat their lunch. They're going to bring their families there. Uh, they, they have as much interest, they being People's Trust Group, has just as much interest in that park looking good. Um, as the city does. I don't think you want a shoddy park next to your beautiful building there. And, and so I think there needs to be a commitment. Um, to spruce up that, that park as well, instead of the city putting all of our funds, uh, in, in, in there as well. So when it comes down to it, this is a long-winded way of saying, who do I? Who do I trust the most? Do I trust People's Trust now? Who has the backing of the EDC, Fort Lauderdale Alliance and Broward Health? To move this project forward now with the vision that they have for it? Or with the kind of nebulous vision that I would maybe like to see, but there's no plan, there's no strategic plan for, for the city? So I trust private enterprise tonight more than I do the government. Um, to do the right thing for this particular piece of property. But like I said, I could change my mind in, in two weeks because my opinion is that wire thin. Uh, on this particular issue, I, I, I've struggled with very few issues, uh, being up here. And I could debate either side very easily all, all night long. Um, but tonight I think the scale tips just, just so slightly. Uh, in, 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 in favor of it tonight, but I can think of a million reasons not to. Um, and, and so I have time to think about it, but that's, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudek, President of Westport Press.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I hear you, Commissioner Drosky. I hear you loud and clear. And the, the one thing that moves my needle one way as opposed to another way. Is there's no guarantee that in two years I'll be here. There's no guarantee that in four years you'll be here, sitting on this dais. So we have the, the opportunity to make this decision. Um, and, and it's, it's our vision that starts to roll the ball. Uh, you know, there are plenty of projects that previous diasses have delayed making a decision. And then the individuals that are on the di- dais were voted out and they didn't have an opportunity to see the end of that vision. This dais has an opportunity to make a decision. And to see that vision become reality. There's no guarantee that your vision or my vision or any other members on this dais's vision. Uh, in three years from now, uh, will be the majority decision or four years from now, or, or whenever we get to that point. Uh, and so, uh, you know, your, your statement of I trust private entity over the, the government at this point in time. Uh, I, I agree with as well. Uh, and, and I think this is our responsibility to make the tough decisions and to live with those tough decisions. Uh, and this is a very difficult decision. Uh, there are two ways that, that we can move this, this piece of property. Uh, we can either leave it the way it has been for the last 12 years. Or we can start a road to development. And, and that's what I think that, that we need to really think about. Uh, and, you know, we, we've made a commitment to move the city forward. And we have the opportunity to do that here and now. Um, there's no guarantees, two and a half years from now, we'll have that same opportunity. There's no guarantees, four years from now, we'll have that same opportunity. So, um, you know, I am leaning towards, uh, uh, approval of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President.
Yes, um. This is, um, I feel, an important project. Um, in my district. But it's an important project for the city of Deerfield Beach as well. And I've heard a little pushback from about the $2,000 Florida money. If the city were to spend the $200,000 in improvements in that park, it is the right thing to do. As I've mentioned before, it is the first, this park is for the first black police officer in the city of Deerfield Beach. We need to contemplate that for a second. And then for it to leave it like that, want to put the money in a general fund, for what? That, that park needs improvement right now. You can't even park over there. And if we did nothing, once again, the residents in that community is just being pushed aside. For business to come in and to do whatever they're going to do. Exploit the opportunities there for themselves without making a legitimate commitment to improve the community as well. That $200,000 would be the right thing to do to commit to that community. And the other thing is eventually the city is going to have to deal with that, that park. And I'll guarantee you at that point, it'll be more than 200,000. It'll be more than 200,000. And that, it, it, it is the right thing to do for the residents of the area. Because people are going to be coming off of I-95. And they're going to see that building and that park is in direct relation, uh, a direct relation with that building. Up on 15th Street, when People's Trust was coming, I sat down with Mr. Gold. And I told him basically the same thing, that 15th Street was not. Really appealing at the time. And he asked me, what do you need? And I told him about, you know, uh, the way things were, uh, on 15th Street. And he joined right in and we were able to get the 15th Street beautification. I wish that street is completely different and the high school and, uh, other groups were involved in it. To really beautify, uh, again, Mayo Howard is a tribute to a park of, um. You know, uh, first black police officer. And you go and look at some of the other parks. This park needs attention. I guarantee you Sullivan Park doesn't look like that. Sullivan Park looks great. A lot of money invested in it. We ought to be able to be committed to invest in the same kind of money into parks where it's needed. And, uh, Mayo Howard Park needs major improvements.
Uh, I'm going to jump in on that. Comparing Mayo Howard Park, which is a passive park and really a glorified pocket park. I don't care who it's named after. To Sullivan Park is, is an absurd argument. I tell you what you need over there is you need more lighting. You can take that $200,000 and, and, and put that along there to lead to Mayo Howard Park. It's such a small park. If you talk about adding parking in there, where are you going to put that? You're going to lose actual green space. And put in more parking along a winding road for a glorified pocket park. It doesn't make sense to me at all. Um, I think a big portion of it needs to go in there. Whatever needs to be improved on it, we can do that for sure. And trying to change the parking will do, add in a lot more spaces. And something that's a very small parcel of land is going to eat up green space and brings up its own problems. Now that sidewalk, that winding area that gets there, the lighting, landscaping, absolutely, I could see that. So trying to say because it's named after somebody, therefore it deserves this, I don't buy it. That with all due respect, Vice Mayor, I, it just, that doesn't influence me on this. What influences me on that is I don't want it to handcuff us taking that money and spending it in that spot. Where we are limited due to space, uh, spatial constraints on what we can do there. Bottom line is regardless of what we do with that money, what happens in that area, the money should stay in the area for sure. But I think this project needs to move forward. I disagree with Commissioner Drosky that I trust private entities more than I trust government. I think I trust both of them fairly equally. But I think the incentive, once this building is built, someone's got a mortgage on it. Changes compared to what we've dealt with in the last several decades. So, um, it, it's important to see this, uh, change. It's important to see this move forward. It's going to be a shot in the arm for the area. I think that's where our comments. And that does my vision of what I like to see for our times. Go ahead, Vice President.
Oh, Mayor, um, that park is a frequently used park. And the parking there is terrible. Maybe what we should do is let the city manager take a look at that. And then see what's the viability of creating better parking for the people that use it all the time. And, um, so when you say that it does, you know, it's not a thing about who it's, it's named for. Well, I think that is important. It's important when we name a park. And then we don't change it. Why do we even do that? That is a recognition of a person who has contributed and has served. And then there should be a responsible, uh, responsibility and a commitment as well. To be able to do the right things when it comes to it, when we name a park. Or we name a city facility after someone, there's a prestige that goes along with that. So it does, it may not matter to you, but it matters to me. It matters that it would be the right thing to do is to, is to not pour money just because there's a name there. But to understand holistically how that would benefit the area because it's a frequently used park. And it also cast an image on our city. That park, I, I should be as much concerned with it, uh, as, as, as you could be concerned and anybody else should be concerned. Because we always want to present the right image for our city. That is not the right image. The park is, you got a lot of people that use it all the time. The lighting, I think it would be a great idea. That, that, that is actually something that, uh, needs to be implemented. But it's a, it's a park where people are over there all the time parking, a lot of the times so close to the road. It's just a matter of time before something happens. Now, the green space, yeah, that's a consideration. But we ought to be able to show that in consideration to green space and some, some other consideration. We still can do something to make it, uh, an attractive place.
What I really hope, in, in, if your lights on, I apologize. I don't see, I don't see your hand raised or your light on. So I just see your hand going up, uh, physically. So I apologize, but I will say this. I don't want to get caught in the muck about us talking about a park and where this money's going to go to right now. This is about this project and let's keep it to this project at this point. I don't think we're limiting ourselves as long as there's not an approval here with that money going specifically to that park. We have the option to be able to move this project forward. And then we can debate that at another time, in which we're, we have a lot more information on that in front of us. So we have people here concerned about, do we move forward with the project or not? Rather than talking about the issue which we all intend to do in this government. So, um, is that something you were looking to say?
Yes, I was. And I, I could object to improving a park. When District 3 has a park that's not a park, it's called Marty Papelski Park. It's not open. It's not a park. It's a vacant field. Do you know how many parks, city parks there are in District 3? Zero! But I'm not going to make that argument because that's not what's in front of us tonight. What's in front of us tonight is whether or not we think this is a good project for the city or it's not. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Parnas, second from Commissioner Hudek. Uh, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudek.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Ask your question.
Yes.
Mayor Vance.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at comments by administration and legal.
Good evening. Just one miss, uh, this evening. Uh, and it's a, um, a request for a, a motion to assist our, uh, one of our cities in, around us. That'd be the city of Lighthouse Point, doing some renovations on one of their athletic fields, specifically a baseball field. They've asked for reciprocal use on, uh, on, or actually, no, I shouldn't say reciprocal. They've asked for the use of Pioneer Park, um, for a specific period of time. And with our new sports policy, it would be a minor fee waiver of $500. Any compliance with that sports policy, I'd just be asking for a motion to, uh, allow me to provide that to the city of Lighthouse Point. It does not interfere with any of our existing program.
No, even from the public, go to the public office. Close it to the public, commission. Yes.
Since it doesn't interfere with our little, uh, program. Or any other program, I, I think the other neighbor, right now, it's not a bad thing.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Perfect. Thank you. First guy.
Second.
Second, thank you. Give a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay.
I have one comment tonight, uh, mayor and commission. Uh, some of you may have seen in the news, um, late yesterday afternoon, uh, Governor DeSantis issued an emergency, or excuse me, executive order 21. Dash 102. Uh, it provides that all local COVID-19 restrictions and mandates on individuals and businesses are hereby suspended. The order also eliminates and supersedes any existing emergency order or ordinance. Issued by a county or municipality that imposes restrictions or mandates upon businesses or individuals, uh, due to the COVID-19 emergency. Uh, so I wanted to point that out and also, you know, elaborate and say, so everything that was in the, the county order. Uh, that we've been following and, and the more recent update with respect to restrictions on businesses and individuals. Um, effectively goes away, at least as the, uh, emergency order is concerned. So for example, the 50% capacity limitations that were in effect on places, you know, like retail and restaurants. Um, will go away and, and a number of other restrictions. Um, you know, a lot of discussion about, you know, mask requirements on businesses that will go away. But keep, keep in mind that, you know, businesses and HOAs, as I understand the governor's order and his statements, you know, do still have. The right to impose their own, um, policies and procedures. And, and many, many of them have already come out and indicated that they would not be, uh, changing their, their policies in that regard. So it, it does not expect things like, you know, vaccines. So it, it does not think, expect things like, you know, vaccinations and, and things of that nature, but, but restrictions on individuals and businesses. With that, we're at city commission business. And it's under item number nineteen is discussion regarding the solid waste working group.
I'm actually going to ask that we table this tonight till our next meeting on May eighteen. I had asked um, a guest speaker, Mayor Greg Ross from Cooper City, who is the chair of the working group. Um, so uh, we've got this presentation tonight and we had a last minute conflict and could not make it tonight. So I'm just asking you to be tabled for two weeks in our next.
Alright.
That's a motion I'll second that's necessary.
Motion to table to May eighteen.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 No comments by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a couple of comments. Um, District One office hours are this weekend coming up. Um, so please reach out to the city secretary. I hold office hours from ten to twelve uh, via Zoom right now. Um, so if you need to meet with me, please reach out to the city secretary. Um, I have received numerous complaints uh, with regards to the new FPL lights that are being installed. It seems, and, and on paper, these things are great, the white light, it makes it easy to drive and all of that. But they seem to be putting the same lights in neighborhoods. And it's almost like it's daytime twenty-four hours uh, on end. So I've got numerous residents complaining that uh, these lights are so bright that uh, it's illuminating their homes. Uh, I don't know if there's anything we can do with regards to reaching out to FPL to see is there a neighborhood light as opposed to a highway light that they should be installing uh, in neighborhoods? Because um, I'm, I'm getting numerous complaints at this point in time.
True. We will look into that, Commissioner Higak. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that. I, I know on paper it sounds like a great idea and, and I was all excited about it. Um, but now I've got, like I said, residents, you know, uh, calling me a- all hours in emails uh, about how bright these, these lights actually are in the neighborhoods. So I would really appreciate, you know, if we could talk to FPL, how we tone down the ones in the neighborhoods would be tremendously appreciated. And, and that's, oh, and happy Mother's Day. It's coming up on Sunday. That's it for me.
Build yourself up in the last minute. Well, well, build up. That, that dinner's gonna be really cold when you got all the time. District Two.
Yes, uh, Mayor. Uh, just like to remind everyone that on Thursday, we have the National Day of Prayer. Um, at seven PM, that will be at the Pioneer uh, Baseball Field. Let's also update the commission that the Juneteenth celebration uh, is coming together. Um, the COVID uh, issue really put a damper things as to actually what would be allowed and what would not be allowed. So um, it's gonna be somewhat of a, of a hybrid. Although things are beginning to open up and uh, with whatever we're available to do, we will, we will do. Um. If you remember, Mr. Doug Swab from Maverick Entertainment, we actually, the commission uh, gave him an award a few months back. Um, he made a movie uh, related to Juneteenth. It's about twelve minutes long. I haven't seen it. Uh, but it's in commemoration of the Juneteenth celebration. And um, I'm very excited about that. I'd like to thank him for that. Uh, the Tiger Rattler registration is going well. I'm very happy with uh, what they're doing. Um, I think they have a lot of kids this year. And um, I'm looking forward to uh, to the kids participating in the new league. And I think it's gonna be a, a great opportunity for us. There was a young lady that came before us uh, with a scholarship opportunity. It was for the Fort Paul Foundation. And she wanted the city to make a recommendation as uh, to, to a person that could get the scholarship. And uh, we haven't done that. And um, so I'm having someone reach out to her to see if it's too late for us to recommend someone for the Fort Paul Foundation Scholarship. And um, I'll bring that to the commission if that is still available to her. And to all of the wonderful mothers um, that make it happen. Far too often, they are forgotten. And like Commissioner Higak, uh, this coming Sunday is Mother's Day. And we need to recognize how special our moms are. So to all of, you know, our mothers, District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, and our neighbors to the north, our neighbors to the south, all of the mothers, Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Three. First, we're having a District Three meeting uh, via Zoom on May twenty-fourth at one PM. Um, anybody listening in, welcome to contact the city and get the link. See how things is going in District Three. Uh, two, I want to take a time to applaud the police department and our police chief and assistant lieutenant. They did two raids. They call it blitz. On one night, they gave out a hundred and nine tickets, confiscated guns and drugs, made, made felony arrests besides. And a week later or so, they did a hundred and nineteen arrests in one night with digits. So they're taking traffic seriously in our city. Too many people are injured and killed. And it's gotta stop. And I, I wrote him a text, uh, police chief, keep up the good work and keep those blitzes coming. It's the only way that people are near arrest or get tickets and it costs them a couple hundred bucks, points on their license. And their insurance goes up. Maybe they'll slow down. Maybe they'll take it serious. There are too many people injured and killed in this city. And I, again, I applaud their efforts at Kurt Taylor. Next, things are going well in District Three. People are coming back, people are moving in, home, home buying, and part of my district is up. And people look forward when the state will come and do Crystal Lake Bridal sidewalks, Forty-Fifth Street. They, they are very pleased that the city is sick and interested in April. And, and they really are. They are grateful. Uh, so the kids don't have to get off school buses in the future on the road, you know, on the sidewalk from the bus. That's what I have in District Three. And I do wish everybody who's out there and listening, or maybe not listening, Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. Mr. Four?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't have many comments. Thank, the first one related to District Four is to inform everyone, pardon me, that beginning May twelve, the Florida Department of Transportation is going to begin uh, beginning a road lighting improvement project. It is going to go on Powerline Road from Hillsborough Boulevard North to the county line. FDOT will be replacing twenty-seven light poles and retrofitting seven existing light pole holes. And they'll be installing the new LED lights. Um, so that corridor will be uh, well lit and it's, so those intersections do need uh, additional lighting. Um, the trade-off is that there may be periodic lane closures uh, Monday through Friday, going anywhere from eight-thirty in the morning to seven-thirty at night. And there is no projected end date to the project, although it's anticipated to be completed in the fall. So between, during the summer months, you can expect um, some construction along Powerline Road again, between Hillsborough Boulevard and the county lines. If you're gonna be in that area or live in that area, give yourself a couple extra minutes to get to where you're going. My second comment tonight is my appointee to the Education Advisory Board had to resign for reasons unrelated to the board. And so I'm looking for an appointment. If there's anybody out there with an education uh, background or interested in education that wanna serve on the city's Education Advisory Board, I'm looking for a new appointee. So please reach out to me or the city manager's office. Uh, and, and let me know your interest so I can fill that vacancy quickly. Uh, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, as was brought up earlier, which did a recent change by the governor yesterday. Uh, while I know there's many people to applaud that, um, whenever your position is, I, this is part of the frustration that we've had as local government. And, and in my opinion, this is another poorly communicated and ham-handed attempt to change the rules on the fly without having it properly thought out. Poor communication, uh, it blindsided many people. And it, it could be handled, it could have been handled differently. And it's disappointing. This isn't a partisan shit thing. And whatever you feel about the governor, who I thought was making phenomenal job from a environmental standpoint, from the first to office. No one is really equipped to deal with a pandemic. Uh, this nature has a precedent and so I don't expect miracle workers, but I will, I do expect that communication. And it's really put on all the city attorneys uh, um, putting in overtime to sort it out and, and understand what the ramifications are. Because what happens is a press conference and some poorly worded uh, orders will come out, only to be reversed shortly thereafter. We've seen that in the very beginning of pandemic. And it's a shame and it should change and it's not the way we should be doing this as a state. Because it affects every single person in this state. I ask people to be patient with the businesses as the new rules are being implemented. Um, still do not take it out on the businesses. I'll take it out on individuals. And certainly don't show up here at city hall and take it out on our staff. As I promised you, chief's right across the way and I'll expect him to have you moved. Maybe use your head as a way to keep the door held open as you exit. Um, it's just not gonna be tolerated. And, and this poor communication should not drift down into the workers and the employees out there as we try to navigate this uh, ever-changing landscape. Uh, I do wanna thank uh, Place for Crest for doing a good job with the ULI presentation when I was in April to attend. Um, I, I really wanna thank him uh, for good feedback on that. And while there are people that may have their own conspiracy theories, it's not something that was private. Meetings are happening in city hall. Our minds are made up hard and we think uh, it's an opportunity to get some visioning which is desperately needed. And I hope we can all come together and come up with solutions that are resident driven as opposed to anything else. Um, the Day of Prayer that's coming up, I will not be uh, in town and I will be unreachable for the next several days. Um, I know the Vice Mayor and who can ask any job and ask for a prayer. And uh, sorry to miss that, but I know he'll do fantastic jobs usually. Um, Tenth Street, the FDOT is moving forward with what their recommendation, recommendation is. For Tenth Street, we ask everyone, please uh, pay attention to that. And I believe the rule probably comes before the IPO in the split. As we know from the beginning, there is truly no stopping this train out of the station. So I do wanna say that they've at least done a good job of taking it around to it and, and coming up with, well, not something we necessarily want, certainly better than a lot of the, I think, a lot of the other options that were being presented. And we're a long ways away from the uh, basically having a bad project shut down our throat. We were able to have our voices heard. And I wanna thank everybody who's participated in that along the way. Homeowners insurance in the state of Florida is for many people being canceled. Um, several people have received notices here in Deerfield Beach. There are some that think it might be related to a specific incident, but I can tell you um, people in my neighborhood out west where we've had no flooding and no other issues like that um, have received letters that their homeowners insurance is being canceled. It is a state of Florida problem and uh, people should be aware of that. And hopefully there are options out there for everyone. It's not easy um, to find, certainly not a whole, but that's for sure. I do wanna say that the, when we talk about infrastructure, we talk about uh, the issues that were brought up tonight by those residents. Uh, we have a storm letter feed back several years ago. I would, one of my goals is to see us start moving forward with those projects. We've had the opportunity to gather some money, we've had the opportunity to take a look at where some of our areas' needs are. It's now our opportunity to start moving forward with some of that. I would see that start happening. Well, Mother's Day is Sunday and I wanna wish all the mothers Happy Mother's Day and certainly the mother of my children. Um, my child. Um, May eighteenth is also Haitian Flag Day. That's something we had highlighted a few years ago in City Deerfield Beach. I don't want that, that we forgot. I would make sure that we continue with that and that um, that is recognized on May eighteenth. I do wanna say that the Commissioner Parnas is absolutely right. BSO's done a good job and then the special details go out there and we can sweep and try and curb some of these issues. But the traffic issues in the city, really it's not just the city, it's all over our county. I will tell you, City Deerfield Beach are out of control. What I've seen this weekend alone i- is enough to, to, it's my breaking point. Yesterday morning, sitting in my home office, I watch a van whip down the street, go off the road, slam it to a mailbox. T-belt uh, completely demolish its front end on a Royal Palm in our neighborhood, traveling at a high rate of speed. Person's not wearing a seatbelt, break their nose, it's a big mess. That was the end of the weekend. Saw people traveling fifty, sixty miles an hour in residential neighborhoods, or through stop signs. I saw someone blow past me at at least seventy miles an hour going down Hillsborough towards the east, blowing through the red light at Deer Creek, right before the traffic was about to come out. Um, and that was just within a few hours of watching someone else blow through stop signs, blow through red lights. I saw too much of it this weekend. I spoke to uh, chief, I spoke to our XO, um, let them know about some of the issues that we're having. But I would like to see us consider putting more manpower and said person power here in City Deerfield Beach. Deputies can't be everybody. And with what we're seeing on the streets, it's way too hazardous. It's a safety issue. And we've seen enough people get killed that happens. So I would like to see us make a commitment to looking towards, let you figure out a way that we can do something about this. Our sheriff's office does a great job with doing a lot for little. But maybe it's time to expand that, put more people on the ground to make sure that we have the details that are here to really get a harness on this out-of-control driving in our city. It, we, it's not just on our main thoroughbys, it's in our residential areas. And we've gotta do something about it. So I hope that is a commitment that we can all consider at a certain time that we can move forward with so we can make our neighborhoods and all of Deerfield Beach a lot safer. Um, with that, that's all I have for our list. Motion? Motion is second. We have a second from the Vice Mayor. All in favor for journey, say aye.
Aye.